All right, I will call the Wabash City Council March 4th meeting to a gym.
First in line.
The citizens of America and to the Republic which expands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Maybe guest speakers? Okay. Next up then it will be public comments. This is for the public to offer and provide any comments regarding really anything that they have. I think everybody else is. To my life.
There are a couple people on line. But.
Linda, you don't have any comments, I don't think usually, but let us know if you do.
All right, any changes additions to the agenda?
Thank you. Would it say for eight or four in the park?
Yeah. Okay, we'll move eight four to ten six.
Eight six is added today. Eight six is added today.
And we have an eight six.
The street commission applicant.
Okay. Okay. All right. Mayor Emily Dran, any comments at all? I don't really have anything.
I don't. It was an amazing grumpy old men festival. I know sometimes, a lot of times I walk around and people give the city credit. And certainly our public, our public works team does a ton, but they think that we own the festival. So I always just give due credit back to the chamber. It was a really good event and I didn't hear ultimately how many, it was some ridiculous amount of of visitors to Wabash Shaw. So that was really good to see and, and thanks Tim for doing this for me. I think if we'd waited to fly out tomorrow, we'd have a canceled trip. So I appreciate you.
Oh, no problems. We'll go to committee reports. So let's start with Brian and utilities.
Sure, I'll try to make this as quick as possible. So the PFAS issue that we have on well three. I talked with Caroline and staff like Bolton next staff and we wanted to contact our state reps. So I wrote the letter that's on your desk. Just kind of outlining what our issues are, how it's financially not feasible to deal with for us. And just kind of reaching out to them for help or whatever. They were great. They responded right away, set up a meeting with the Minnesota Department of Health. And so this morning it was myself, Steve Truskowski, panel, that's our two reps. Brian Moll and Megan from Bolton, Megan's like the PFAS expert. And then three representatives from the Minnesota Department of Health. So we just kind of reviewed how we got here. They did the first test they said in twenty twenty one and then since like twenty three to twenty four, they've done quarterly testing. So like what he said was like eight tests. And even though we're according to their test, very borderline on well three. He said one test was below and seven were above their, their the federal tolerance. There were so many points that were interesting. So they had state regulations, which we are within state regulation tolerance, but then the feds got involved and they set their regulations even more stringent. And that's why we're, we're dealing with this now. Another thing is which is a question I asked in the letter, they identified there's twenty five other rural communities that are dealing with the same thing we are. So a mandate put in place for twenty twenty nine to deal with something that there's no funding for, which is completely unfeasible for a account like that to, to deal with. So it was pretty much all informational, but it was good that we all met and exchanged some ideas. So Megan has done supplementary testing for this before, like a different kind of tests and in her opinion, it's she gets more favorable or more big results from this test. And the Department of Health that has never even heard of this additional test before they do the EPA approved one. And so we loosely got them to commit that if she can do this other testing and will they recognize the results? They said, well, we'll definitely have a conversation about it. So so right now moving forward and I just got an email that Boltman then put together like an action plan. So like what we're going to, the steps we're going to take before twenty twenty nine. So there's, there's no grant funding for capital improvements, like infrastructure ways to deal with it, but there is some funding to try to figure some stuff out, like we can investigate. If we drill a well deeper, will we clear it? Maybe there's other areas we could put in a new well if we had to, which we don't want to do. And then, and then this other testing. So we're just going to kind of work with our consultants. And I just keep the MDH informed and we all agree we do have some time and we, we asked him, you know, what happens in twenty twenty nine if and we get a letter saying you're in violation, we do need to do something to, so you're not going to shut our water off and, you know, so we, we do have time to deal with it. Hopefully. You know, maybe, maybe our community can set the bar with this testing. Can help everybody else out that's dealing with it. There's a chance that the federal government pulls back on all these tolerances and we just have no issue anymore. So that's where we're at. I'll just get further updates when they come up.
Brian, I meant to look this up because I think it was reported. Are, are the communities all over the state?
I, I believe so. They, they knew sure to make the point that there's no like urban cities. It's all rural outlined communities, but I'm not sure what areas. They did say that a lot of the metro area is safe because they draw water from the Mississippi, which just doesn't have this issue, maybe because it's always moving or flowing here.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other things you please?
No.
Jeff, do you want to give a fourth update?
Yeah, we had, we discussed NEC here in there request. I guess they have four million left and they're trying to get a some way to get a request in so they can reclaim the rest of that money. We talked about the phase two environmental study of athletic field site. And then the bars terminal we discussed and it looks like we got cost increases and still delays. It looks like another, you know, six months for permits possibly. That's about it.
Is, is that being delayed by the state and federal? Both? Both? All right. Perfect. Tony, any streets parks?
Good evening, everyone. Street commission would not meet. We did not have a forum. We will be adding November tonight. Should we add the agenda? It should be, this should help our forum issue. We still have longer meetings. Campground for parks, we've got campground, hockey, slatter, trust or camper, which is approved. We discussed needing to move home parking permit out of the flood plain and discuss different places and then the base was, was chosen. If the funding comes through the PMA. We elected a chair. Bill Kay is going to be running the park board meetings. That kind of frees up my time. So that me trying to run the meeting can't participate in it. So we're just kind of trying to do that with street commission park board that don't let out. Really with some new members, we review the Roberts rules of order and how to run meetings and, and stick the agenda, things like that. Help that situation also. And then other than that, we're going to do a court read for a snow, a snowstorm later. I don't really know what's going to happen, but hopefully we'll have that place in case we get, you know, three, five inches and then sounds like the earliest or the worst part, it's going to be like four, five, six o'clock in the morning. So we don't really know what's going to happen with the school. They're going to be, you know, running school yet tomorrow. So
There's no, there's no.
Go home. So.
Tony, did you want to talk about the schedule? Your work schedule or?
Oh, yeah. So about, well, through our employee evaluations, they provide us feedback on what they would like to see. Each department does that kind of helps us, you know, try to keep employees happy and keep, you know. Stay behind the benefits and stuff like that to keep it personal. One of the things that they requested was for ten hour work weeks. So for the last three weeks to the month, we've been, we've been running that schedule and seems to be working fine. It's not much change from the four nines and the four hours on Friday. So Brad or myself is usually on Friday morning in case something comes up. There's always somebody in a call in case something happens and if we're going to have a small storm on Friday or Saturday or Sunday, we see it leave early on Thursday or Thursday. So we've been kind of balancing that to down on overtime and so far we're good. So.
Good. And then for planning, we had a discussion about result, which is on the agenda today. Some land use updates in the same area and then review and proposed some changes to junkyards, open sales, mixed use areas and outdoor storage, which is going to be more to come. I think we'll probably look at that in a couple, maybe next month or a month after. So that's about all for please. Brian, do you have anything for anyone else?
Well, February, that's sixty two calls. So we're off one call over last year for February over the first few months, we're one call behind of where we were last year. We got a new initial number acting that's on the agenda for today. We have a few open positions still. But other than that, if you're going to the government, go visit the first month of, there's a March where they called. Nine seven two is signed with that. The preliminary bill is something about twenty six hundred dollars to fix it. So while I was gone, we turned off the pension. We're supposed to have a second annual. That's back. We give it up to happen. I'm going to request today. Soon to work well before you went though, we didn't notice the white box on there. One we were not tight. So we depend on those before enough, but on that, it seems to return to this to the working and actually extended delays. We figured it was going to be gone for three days and it was gone for two weeks.
Usual. Thank you for checking the log.
Well, it started to make a noise and at first we've gone on a ground road and probably just a ground guy on the wheel. I mean, we pull over and the object is bruising them. Yeah. We didn't find them all, but I think one of my nerves.
Yeah. Thank you. Next up would be Caroline hearing the point.
Yes, we're celebrating Lisa's five year work anniversary. Lisa couldn't make it today, but we gave her the speech earlier today and presented her mug and we're just going to say a few words about Lisa. Since she's not here, we can talk some about.
Yeah, that's right.
No, Lisa came on board with us five years ago, which put us right in the midst of just about hitting the COVID pandemic. With that being said, Lisa in her true fashion with little to no oversight, helped innovate and streamline city services, not only for the public, but also for the staff when we needed to go online or find options to be able to continue to work together and provide everyone with as much technology and insight. And she did a great job with that. Lisa is always willing to step in and help whether personal or professional. She is a key connector between all of the city departments, as well as having many resources within the community. If anybody ever needs a contact, she usually can fill it up in her phone or her notebook. Not only does she do that, she provides the city's frontline for contact and provides the best level of customer service to each person that she encounters. She provides support staff to both streets and parks for Tony's commissions. And she's the city's go to IT person. So anytime anybody has troubles, whether we are in the office or working from home or she's at home on definitely if we go to her with our questions and problems. She can double several projects and bring you fresh cookies to boot every morning, which I don't know if she has the time to do it. She does. Lisa is known to be our Mary Poppins of the office. If you were in need, she likely has it in her heart, a bag, a phone in her desk or somewhere. Maybe a storage shed too. She can find it and give it to you. We are thankful for Lisa and happy to have her on our team and we're excited for what the future holds for Lisa. So
Thank you.
If you're here, tell her congratulations again and expect one cookies tomorrow.
Thanks, thanks, Elise. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah. And then my other updates is that we do have a request for qualifications out to select an engineer for the highway sixty project. We are required to do that because of the federal funds. And two MinDOT staff have been assigned and are going to sit on the committee along with Jeff and John and others. We realize that the phase two environmental, right now we're still working with Tony on some dates to do the geo scan of the area. And just figure out where the potential former city dump boundaries are, and then they'll do a phase two, which could get pretty expensive if the dump is as big as we think. So me and Kathy are looking at trying to apply for some funding to help pay for that phase two. It's I've got two or three meetings coming up to strategize around the barge terminal. The first meeting on Monday is just to figure out can we bring down the cost? What's our funding strategy on that? And then the second, or no, three meetings, then we're meeting with the Minnesota DNR. We anticipate that they may ask us to come with up with mitigation for the fact that our barge is going to be taking away public water with building the dock. And so we're going to continue to pu- push back. Our project is not doing to the environment and push back on mitigation that they need an example of like restoring the fishing opportunities that are now going to be missed. So well, that meeting I think is happening next Tuesday. And then the third one is with the Army Corps to figure out if we can get sand off the islands before, if, if we can't move forward with the project. At the federal government level, they're basically just saying, we're trying to interpret new executive orders and I just don't really have a timeline for when it gets approved. So it's not great news. But we're going to see what we can figure out in some big meetings coming up. And then we were going to apply for a stormwater implementation grant to prevent the wastewater treatment plant from flooding. But we, they just need really detailed engineering that we just weren't able to provide in the time required. So we're sending back a grant that we got to pay for that. And then the Greenfield Township residents got a postcard in the mail this week. Talking about the need to support the ambulance service and thus far. First of all, there was a bit of a fat finger on my behalf. So there's a an incorrect phone number, unfortunately, on these postcards, but everything else is correct. People are figuring out how to contact us. But the two calls I got were, we can't make the meeting. Who do we contact to support the ambulance service? And the second call was where do I send a donation? So I think so far at least the phone calls that I've gotten are positive. And we're just encouraging people to attend that meeting and support the ambulance service. So I calculated that we got this year, the equivalent of four dollars and fifty cents per person. And our request was thirty dollars per person. So that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Caroline. So next up is the consent agenda.
I'm sorry. Can you, can you remind us of the date and time of that meeting again?
Um, yes, it's March eleventh at seven thirty PM.
Okay, thank you.
Greenfield, right?
Yeah. The date and time of the meeting are correct. So that was the important information.
All right. So eight, one, so consent agenda, eight, one approval of February fourth, regular minutes. League of Minnesota Cities Liability Cover waiver form, Board of Commission appointments. March warrants and also the street commission applicant. I would entertain a motion. I'm ready to motion. All right, we got a first from Jeff, second from Brian. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Perfect. Um, we don't have any public hearings, uh so jump into general business, ten one approval of developer's agreement for the TIF. With Keller.
Yep, perfect, yep. So, um, I'm gonna provide an overview and then Bob is gonna just share an update on the project, because I've gotten a lot of questions on that, so. This developer's agreement is many pages long and Mike Mubani is also on the line to answer questions, so we engaged. TAF Law, which has worked with Mike on creating the development agreements. So it combines, um, basically our TIF, our pay as you go assistance. Um, so just to explain that a bit better, we don't pay out anything right now on the TIF assistance, they're obtaining a loan. And then at the end of the project, when all the improvements are complete, we verify that, and they give us a list of invoices and receipts. And we verify that it's all been on eligible costs, so since it's a redevelopment TIF, it's all related to cost to. Dental the building, build the underground parking, um, add utilities. Um, the other thing in here, um, we are the recipient of the housing grant that they received. And we are a passer agency, so this just makes sure that. They provide us receipts, we send those on to the state, um, we receive the money and then, and then make sure that they're complying with all the state requirements on the grant that we received. And then the third component is we obtain a grant for a hundred sixty six thousand dollars to cover the cost of demolition. Um, and I try to just highlight some important facts. It requires them to begin construction by June first of twenty twenty five and complete the project be- before July first of twenty twenty seven. Um, it, it prohibits short term rentals, but does allow for short term leases, that was something that came up. Um, you know, a market rate residential property is defined as a property with no income restrictions and property rented at market value. Intended to address the lack of workforce housing in greater Minnesota. Um, another thing that came up was, what if they sold the property? The developer may not assign this agreement to a new par- property or transfer the project without prior written approval by the city. Um, and any material changes in the city, in the project must, um, or the development plans must be promptly notified. So those were the highlights as I read them. Um. And we didn't have a lot of too much back and forth, um. And then Bob, I don't know, do you wanna just kind of share where the project's at?
So it's good to come down to one shot, see you guys work, um, everything's been going really well, um. Carolyn asked me just to kind of maybe share a little bit of our schedule. Um, so this month, we're still working with the architects and the several, several's been in contact with the city as well. As soon as we get that finished, we'll be able to set our date to kind of go through the architecturals. I got Carol lots of to kind of sit down and kind of, you know, maybe add a little bit of him, but I don't think things. Um, the month of, um, so we're in March and April, the contracts go out, so that all the bidding process starts. Then we'll, by the end of the month, we'll have the contracts. And then in May, we will start demolition and we will start construction. And I did get a couple requests where people would like to get on the list or, you know, something is about, you know, bringing the, you know, civic attempts uh beyond the building. So, um, once we get the architecturals, you know, we'll have a little bit better idea, because then I can say, this is this size for sure, that of this apartment. This is where, you know, it's located, whatever, and we, this is first I've heard of this, so I would like to, you know, so we'll be working on that. But we've had where people have been interested in, uh, the building before it's built. And, um, I had, and I already have a lot of pent up demand where people haven't had your apartments for a while. Um, people get excited and, um, I was just sharing that, you know, we finished the job in, uh, Ken Ball's this last year. And that was full in ninety days, so that was eighty four apart and still ninety days. So I'm kind of anticipating, we're just talking to people and stuff, that, you know, we're gonna have, you know, kind of a little bit of the similar. Um, reactions, but I'm always happy to come down, happy to answer questions and we're really excited about getting started, so. Um, you know, I'm really anxious as you are, looking at the architecturals and, you know, symbols always takes a while, because. You know, Andy, I mean, he puts that on paper, but then they tell us, well, can cannot. So, but did anybody else have any questions or?
Just wanted to comment that we had established a little group a long time ago of who was gonna take a look at the architectural plans and make comments. And we decided, let's not look at it, because what people probably care about is more, what does the exterior look like? And so they, they're still a little bit out, but then I'll just gather whoever said they were gonna be part of that group, then I'll provide comment. And then, yeah, so if I, I have gotten a few calls on people interested in the apartment, so then do we just send them to?
So I'm gonna track it, because this is the first, like, step for today about this, so I think what we'll do is we just wanna be prepared.
Okay.
You know, so. But I think, thank you guys, you guys have a great city here.
I got one question regarding the section on short term rentals.
Okay.
Um, what's the difference between a short term lease and a short term rental? I mean, a short term lease to me sounds like they can lease it out for two days if they want. So what's the difference between a short term lease and a short term rental?
Okay.
So most of our short term leases are like three months, so maybe somebody takes a job for the summer and then they'll actually. Well, the lessons is our smaller apartments and, um. They, they feel like we don't have anything, we don't have anything. Uh, when you're looking at, you know, um, where you, you figured, what was the other word you use, like short term lease? Short term rental, that's what you more feel like for like, oh, I'm gonna rent it for the weekend, I'm gonna take it for a few days, so there's something going on in town, we don't do that. We have long term, they're, they're still short term, but they generally tend to be people that are coming into the area to work. And then they even place their three months or six months. And, and so it kind of involves if there's an empty vacancy, we'll, we'll do that, but other than that, it's not a common thing, it's just. It's nice to be able to help people if they can even raise all their rankings.
Can we quantify that?
Yeah, I think we probably, nothing less than three months.
Let me look at it, I think it sort of defines the short term. I've gotta do a control F, short term rental as Airbnb's. For those.
Define a short term lease.
Okay. Uh, do you have it open?
Yeah, section three, I can read it.
Okay.
It says, let's see here, short term guests shall const- constitute guests belonging to Airbnb, B R B or other vacation rental sites. This shall not prohibit the developer from entering into short term leases, and that's, that's all it says.
Okay.
And I would just say add no less than three months or.
Right, just three months, Dave?
Yeah.
Or whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah, entering, from entering the short term leases less than thirty days, maybe would be.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And to put in the definitions too.
Our definition in, in light use and short term rental, anything less than one month. Is short term, anything over a month does not constitute.
So then this is.
Yeah.
I'd still qualify it in the development agreement, but. Any other questions, comments, Emily, uh Dean?
No, just that those short term leases are very valuable in terms of people trying to come here from employment, we were desperate for that, I. We've had several employees that would have wanted that so that they could look for the, another type of housing that's in very short supply. But it doesn't make them move to Red Wing and then never move to Wabashaw, because they find something there.
Okay.
I'm gonna abstain from voting, um. I have partners in Red Wing that are working on some aspects of the development, so I don't think you need me.
Do you guys have any questions for Mike, who's on the line, Mike Mubani, no? Alright, thanks, Mike.
Alright, I would entertain a motion, do we, resolution, have the agreement through?
Just, yeah. I don't know, I think it's, resolution says it's approved.
So, okay, so, uh, first from Dean. Second from Gene, any other discussions? Alright, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Oh, um.
Sorry, I couldn't get unmuted fast enough, I'm a yay, I'm in favor.
Alright, all those opposed, same side? Alright, she passes. Alright, um, next up is ten two, rezon of nine eleven, felt app was first read.
Okay, bye, Mike, you guys can go to, if you want to, thank you.
I think this is, we discussed it at planning, which was, um. Approved unanimously, I think it's pretty straightforward, rezoned. Land use was re- redone too, so I don't know if they have any questions or anything.
No, no questions.
Okay. Alright, I think that's, I don't need anything else, is that it? Um, the next is ten three, the resolution authorizing the preparation of a feasibility report for the twenty twenty five street utility improvement project. So Caroline.
It'll be, uh, Brian or Tony, or Brian, you wanna present this? I, I'll pull up the map for them.
I sure can, if you'd like.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, so this resolution would authorize the preparation of a. Feasibility report for some street improvements, um, the map that was included in the. Packet generally shows where those streets are located, they're kind of scattered around town. Um, the streets themselves are specifically listed in the resolution. Most of them, we'd be looking at, um, some type of a, a mill and overlay type improvement. Uh, there is one street that we're looking at more of a street and utility reconstruction with sewer and water. And that's the Market Street East section between Pier Seven and Main Street. Um, the goal with the twenty twenty five street utility improvement project is to, uh, develop a project that is, um. In the, uh, one point seven five million dollar range, that's the budget. Um, we're not sure, uh, that we can do all of the improvements here, uh, within that budget. Uh, that's what the, uh, feasibility report would identify, it would identify. Current costs for all of these improvements, and then we would. Uh, work with staff to make a recommendation on which specific streets, um, would be done within that one point seven five million dollar budget. Um, and then you would know, uh, basically what you could get done and what might have to be, uh, pushed off to a, a future year if. The total projects over that one point seven five million dollar target. Um. As typical with your street improvement projects, uh, there would be assessments associated with this, so. The preparation of the feasibility report is the first step in that special assessment process. According to statutory requirements, so. Cost of the feasibility report, uh, would not exceed fourteen thousand dollars, and our goal would be to bring. That report back to you at your April council meeting, uh, where you would have the information you need to. Um, make a decision on the scope of the project, and then, uh. If you choose to move forward, the next step would be calling for a, a hearing on the proposed improvement. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. Brian, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, Dean.
Yeah, um. Looking at that map, I see a market in Washington that's, uh, due to be done. Um, is that a priority for the city, even if it's all in such bad condition?
Yeah, so Tony could speak to this, um, if he's in the, in the room, but Tony went around and, and did a visual inspection of all these streets. Uh, he did some pavement ratings a few years back, combined. Uh, the pavement ratings that we did and then Tony's, uh, visual inspection, I think these are the, the priority streets, streets that he identified that needed work.
Only reason I ask is because those, the market in Washington are in such bad condition. And, uh, uh, they're getting dangerous.
Yeah.
I think it's also because of the, the, the pitch there, I get a lot of, I get a lot of complaints about it too, because people are coming down on bikes and, and strollers and. And cars.
Yeah, and that's the section we identified as the. The reconstruction piece there, because there's some sewer and water needs there as well, and some stormwater issues. Um, to deal with there as well. That'll be the most expensive, um, part of the project.
Do we own enough property down there for retention pond? Does it speak so?
That's, we'll look at that as a part of the, um, the feasibility report, um, what size we would need for some type of retention pond and, and what property is. Available there and, and how we could fit that in, that'll be part of the study.
Tony?
Thanks.
Give it, okay. Any other questions? I don't have anything, otherwise, uh, if there's no other comments, I would entertain a, a motion. Okay, first from Dean, second from Jeff, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side? Alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is the approved city of Wabashaw strategic plan for twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight.
Yep, so it's, um, thank you, Tim, helped me with some wordsmithing here. Um, I noticed that I put it into our format here online, but it's also in the agenda packet. Um, I did notice that we, I had accidentally taken out promote access to mental health services. And I feel that that's still probably a hot topic. We've debated about our E A P program that we're offering, and I think we still just wanna make sure that staff have access to mental health services and. Brian's done a special training, so I think that should, I think it was just an oversight that that got taken out, but. Other than that, um, this is it, and, uh, Tim helped me just, um, wordsmith things and I think. Again, the new, newer additions now is just some goals and targets around new housing. Which wasn't there, and then taking and implementing projects from our Parks and Trails Plan. Um, and continuing to stay focused on our C I P project and, um, things like that, so I think it's, looks good and. Asking for approval.
I'd make a motion to approve the strategic plan.
Alright. I'll say, first from Emily, second to Brian, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Perfect, there you go. Um, next up is ten five, joint building, open house format buildings discussion, and I know this came out of our last workshop. Alright.
Um, so after our meeting, um, I said that, you know, we're gonna talk. Uh, through maybe with your open house and how, um, that would look. Um, and all with. A few options who are battling, um, building projects right now, considering you're in your buildings. Um, you know, getting, uh, some three hour work for, uh, combined building, um, to get a better understanding of like what the community, um. Would support or wouldn't support, and so, um, I suggest to Caroline that we do some kind of an exit poll or written questionnaire. Um, that they can fill out, whether they really are applying there, um, of what their preference would be and, um, you know, some of the other things. Um. That would be the canvas with the, the driving building would look like and, um. What we're gonna do is other buildings. Um, I did talk to, um, Brad, we did our feasibility study. Um, they said that they've helped out with open houses before, um, and that they would be more happy to help us, uh, you know. Signs, um, make signs, handout, informational flyers, and they would be able to actually cost for that if they were to come down. Uh, but they said they would be happy to, um, create that one down or get on a Teams meeting with us. Um, to make some other recommendations at no cost, so if we want them here in person, um, there are additional costs. Um, but if we wanted them to just basically handout or. Um, something to that effect, that they could do that, no cost source, if we're doing a feasibility study. Um. Other than that, we picked, um, May fourteenth, uh, there's some, uh. Uh, with, um, our, so we picked May fourteenth, um, in five to seven. Uh, kind of using the fire department as a little house for people who have more room than they're going to go over to, and go to, to, and. Um, gives us more time to come up with, um, some of the. Boards and other things that we're gonna put together for the opening host.
Um, so I think this May for fourteenth work for everyone is. Um, so I think this May for fourteenth work for everyone is the first question.
If it's an open house.
Yeah, okay. And then um we thought about boards is was the format with council members available to talk. Um, I think we're probably okay without Brunton there unless
Yeah.
people, um, and then I think another um thing that's come up is um I talked with Mike Bubani and yeah, I'll have some some information ready to go, but we thought this, we thought and we wanted, I guess, to get input on what everyone thinks of the questionnaire, comment card, and our other plan is to market the event on the back of everyone's utility bills. Um, so we're gonna time it with the utility bills that go out at the end of April. Um, so.
So I have a couple, a couple of questions. When, when you did the Parks and Trails master plan open house?
Yep.
Was Boltman make there?
I think so.
Okay, I thought I remember that, but they probably didn't charge us too much to be there. Anyway, I remember that seeming like it had value because a a lot of citizens don't realize the level of professionals that we consult with. And they think that it's Tim and Brian and Emily and Jean and Dean that we're coming up with these ideas and the, and the reality is we have a lot of input into these, into these concepts. So I don't think we need Brunton there, but if we say we don't need them there and then they offer to be there, I think it's valuable. Put it that way because it's valuable to them to market their services and it's valuable to us to show that we've invested in these concepts. And then the second question was, what was the method that people gave feedback to the boards for parks and trails? Was it dots and little post-it notes, like put a dot on something if you like it? And put a post-it note on something if you have an idea or an addition to that? Is that kind of how it went?
Yeah, there were, there were comment cards that I I remember reading and then there were dots. So we, are you saying would the people could dot?
Well, I think it's an easy way for someone to give input that they value something, they value a concept without this whole going down the path of, but exactly how much is it gonna affect my taxes? Because that's not really how instinctively we support things or don't support things, right? So I think what happens with a referendum is the price tag is the first thing that people learn about the project. That's backwards, right? You want to get people's input on the proposed project pretty significantly before you say, oh, and by the way, it's gonna cost sixty million dollars. So I don't know if there's a way, a good way to do that and I'm happy to sit down and think more about that, but I thought the Parks and Trails was valuable because we weren't saying, I mean, we had that information presented to the to the group that convened that included the public, you know, it was sort of like this ADA accessible bathroom addition would cost this much and so there's an awareness and there's a transparency about it, but in terms of an open house, I think the the lead is the concept. What do you think about this concept? Um, and I, and I wouldn't lead with financial information, but I would have financial information available for sure. But you know, even the numbers we have today are not the numbers we're gonna be really dealing with. So, you know, I I can tell people that people have like a threshold, like, oh, my God, it's gonna be a million dollars, a million dollars is a million dollars. Well, we don't know how much these concepts are gonna cost actually because they're not, they're not designed yet. So the 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 purpose, I think, is how do you think our city departments should work? In terms of the spaces that they occupy and where those spaces exist in our community. That I think is what we're trying to get people to give feedback to. Um, you know, an exit poll. Um, that to me is that feedback. I don't know if there's a question you were thinking about, Ryan, like if a combined facility were to be proposed, would you be supportive of it? That's, that's a hard thing, I think, for people to answer at this point, but maybe there's something more nuanced that could be asked. I'm not quite sure what assurance somebody could give us that they would be supportive of it. I mean, projects evolve, you know, people can be supportive initially and then learn more and they're not supportive or they aren't supportive and they learn more and become big champions of something, so.
Yeah. I think what I had brainstormed was preference for a joint building or standalone building.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, funding mechanism, we could probably look at that later. I won't really know. Um, what a sales tax will look like until after May thirty first and so till after the legislature votes on it, of course.
Yeah, it's so in the weeds, like that's such, that's such a complex thing to ask an open house participant about.
Kind of just input on ideas on what could be done with the old buildings, but again, I mean, um and then general comments or suggestions.
Yeah, and the old building, you know, that's just another project. So you know, we're not really inviting that, you know, we're trying to deal with the current, the current need. Um, so I think those, I would definitely accept any free form input about city facilities, but I don't know that I would solicit what should we do with the old building? Because I think that it suggests somehow that we've got that on the docket, you know?
Do we want input on the different sites that were provided?
I would just have uh storyboards above what we look like, uh joint buildings and standalone buildings.
Okay.
And then I would really highlight why it was. The why. Because we can say we want a new building, but we need to say really truly why.
Mm-hmm.
Then in Brown Street, there's certainly that had just one part of pros, cons, deficiencies, needs.
Yeah.
So that was one of the things that I thought could afford of itself of explaining that because they've written out very well, um, you know, here's what you know, our whole kinds of needs of the current building and how um
Yeah, the other part I had a question about is, you know, we've talked as council and as staff with Brunton that we don't envision a brick facility. But a lot of people, when you say city hall, because we have a brick city or, yeah, we have a block city hall, are gonna think, oh, well, we don't need another big, big brick building. So I don't know if Brunton can help us there to just give a, a, you know, there's gonna say clearly what city is. It's not city of Wabashas, but to give us a visuals that people understand. We're not built, we're, I don't think the consensus at all has been willing to be be building a big brick combined facility. Whether people like that or don't like that, I think that should be somehow apparent that this materiality that we've arrived at is gonna be similar to a project that they've done in Kokato or a project they've done elsewhere. And I don't know if they can communicate that. I would think they've done that before. Um.
Uh, in my only other comment is I wouldn't have it at the fire department. I'd have it at the ambulance station. Uh, just so people can see it, they're there, they can see some of the deficiencies, the reasons why, stuff like that. So I think it's more important to do it that way.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That gives us some ability to show rather than say.
Right.
Um, and um I still think basic time burns with it because I'm hoping more things are gonna roll out with the legislature. I unfortunately, again, I'm getting in the weeds with the financing. I can't really get a concrete answer about how much sales tax is available right now, but
I guess I wouldn't focus on financing. I think you could focus on, we are looking at multiple options for financing, but again, as Emily says,
Okay.
we don't know what the final numbers are anyway, so I'm, I would much rather focus on the need and the, and why we're doing it than the funding.
And then the general comment.
I was just gonna say, at the end of the day, that is our responsibility as councils to steward the the resources available. Not the public's, but they can tell us no through these public processes that are available to them. But you know, it's, we, not everybody gets a vote on this type of an issue. We want to know, we want, we want inputs that we make good decisions for our community.
Okay. Okay, and then just to summarize, the comment card would be just a couple preference on the sighting or joint or standalone and then general comments and suggestions. For a takeaway card, okay, right? Okay, no one's nodding. All right, sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you for the work you've done on it. I think we left you with like, why don't we just do an open house? So it's, it seems much more real.
And then asking, doing you guys like the dot exercise? I always like.
Uh, you know what? My preference, if you can give them a comment card, they more likely will fill out the comment card so before they leave type of thing, or we can capture discussion items as we talk to people as well. So I'm i- if people want to do that, that's fine, but our thing is a little bit more complicated than, do you like this building or not?
Yeah.
It's just a super easy way to do it for people who are not gonna take the time. They can just slap that up there and take off and we've had some type of input. Sorry, Jeff.
I really think you still need to put up, make sure people see a price tag on what this is regardless if they're just estimates. I mean, it's gonna be anywhere from like two to ten million dollars depending on what you do. I mean, people gotta have that in their back of their mind to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if we did that for perks. I don't remember. I know we did it in the more the more in the group that was more like twenty five people. I don't know if we did it on the boards, but I hear your point.
I mean, yeah, I'm struggling a little bit with the sand issue too because me and Kathy were in a meeting the other day um where somebody said you know, I think if you can get the material on site, compacting it and getting ready to go isn't gonna be that much per square foot. And so that's kind of another big part of that number that we really haven't nailed down. But we know that regardless of where it goes or how much the property is or how much sand is, there's, there's a building cost. So I would probably prefer to share the building cost, I guess.
That's fine. I mean, I think estimates are fine. I mean, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't show them that whole page of estimates. I would just
Yeah, because that
I would show them a flat number and say, hey, this will cost our this and this will cost this.
Okay.
All right.
I wouldn't.
And if the sand is a question mark, then I think it's on us to just communicate this is the building alone. This is an estimate for the building alone and we have, we still have a question mark with regards to site preparation. Maybe more favorable, maybe less favorable. We don't have that information yet.
And the other thing we, we discussed is, yeah, the cost of utilities is unknown, but yeah, okay. That's sounds good to me. So I will probably be providing the financing information and Ryan and I kind of talked, he would work on the building's needs and goals and stuff.
And Ryan, I'm happy about that.
Yeah, is anyone else willing to take a preview of the materials that we'll have available and provide comments?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay. All right. And Jeff, Tim, Emma and Jeff available to provide input. All right.
You got it?
I will send out an invite for May fourteenth to get it on everyone's calendar. Perfect.
And just for my information, when I'm trying to um possible uh visuals. Uh, so like the Kato building, uh, I, because I don't think they'll make a concept of what our building would look like until the next phase. So am I just looking for buildings that would be of similar materials to show the concept like, hey, this isn't necessarily the size of the building or what it will look like, but this is essentially the outside of what the outside.
Yeah, I guess I was looking at the plans we have, just the the visual, and then maybe if we can find something that resembles that. You know, like we have a standalone that we were looking at at the workshop, right, for the ambulance only. So put something like, hey, it'll be, it'll look like this. Uh, if we can find it, that's, that's what I would do. Gives a little bit, a concept of our layout and our, what it'll look like. All right, thanks, Ryan. All right, moving on to ten six, so approval of possible parking and relocation from Malone to Eagles Basin and Jean, I believe you want to suppose?
So with this, are we looking, we're looking to put any other park equipment back in that park whatsoever?
Uh, there's not a lot of stuff that we can, but there's nothing planned. Uh, the only reason that we would be moving this is because it's paid for. And you know, you know, they're trying to get everything out of the floodplain that they can. Um, if we weren't getting money to move it and upgrade it a little bit, we wouldn't be doing that. Uh, it doesn't mean that we can't put something back, but when we looked at the different areas to move it, um, Eagle Basin has nothing out there in that area. Here's basically full.
Mm-hmm.
Then you got Brugger Park, which is close to where Malone Park is, so kind of like spreading stuff out a little bit, um.
Is it because the offset for this playground equipment is close to the slough? What about on the other side of that, you know, the sidewalk that's there or anything like that?
We, our original plan was to move it up to by the shelters.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, you know, flooded last summer, but um, you know, people don't want all that. So we didn't want to lose the money that'll cover the hoop and then upgrade it.
So it's a scheme to tell us to move it.
Well, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
We can just leave it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we won't get anything and then it's gonna be there. We're gonna be stuck with peak gravel. It's gonna be stuck in the, you know, easily flooding area that we've been there three years.
So you got clean it, you're gonna do it?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's not brand new equipment. It's not old, but it's, you know, we got a P rock where they, I mean, they want us to take all the P rock and replace it and, you know, so uh, extra work. We can't put wood chips down because they're gonna float away.
Right, to me, it's the goose species down there. I mean, it is just everywhere, you know.
And it was like, you know, I seen like plenty of people today on their uses and I probably didn't differently, but I mean, I could buy it sometimes a day and you know, there might be a couple kids and parents there once in a while, but
I just, I just see kids, you know, you know, people out there fishing and there's kids importing on things like that, so I just wanna, would like to see someone else in that park, you know, besides.
Why do you, I mean, that's the problem. Just get it to me.
Yeah, if we're gonna get money for it, just like those, you know.
Yeah.
Either do it, because they said if you don't do it now, we're not, we're not maintaining this ever again. Like if we pass, pass the buck on it, they don't cover anything, so like.
And the use that it'll get out there will be terrible, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I guess like I'm very pro playground. Uh, but I thought, well, maybe when we realign the highway, we get development out there. Maybe we can place some sand there for free and create a new park. Um, I think we, I mean, because there will be bathrooms out there. That's, that's helpful. There's bathrooms, but um and you know, we, we've been discussing a future all abilities playground and we had talked about Schmidt Park, but I think this, but yeah, the flood plain makes it complicated, I guess, so.
Hopefully, it just, you know, makes it complicated. Just, I'm just looking at, you know, the the, the sustainability, you know, of this park, you know, it's just right there and so the flood point does throw up.
I don't know if the future plans are available, but actually, you know, if there's some going on near Republic, you know, there's buildings that walk, is there any little spot in there for a park?
Yeah.
I don't think we want to say much, but at least.
Malone Park was, you know, still there, but yeah, I feel like if you, I don't know what this looks like, but if you put a new playground, you'd wanna bring in sand and get it out so it's not flooding all the time. So, um. It's, I don't know, it's a, it's a toughie, I guess, but yeah.
Just a question, because I can't, for some reason, ten six disappeared or it's not showing up for me. Is the resolution to move it to either Brugger Park or Eagles Basin, or was there some staff recommendation for one of those locations?
Brugger Park already has a new ground, which is really good shape. Um, it's, uh, we lived at Schmidt Park. But we kind of felt that's supposed to the pool, which we already got equipment there. Uh, then the Eagle Basin, you know, there's, there's a lot of people out there, so we thought that that's probably the best move and then we talked to the park board about it. Uh, that's kind of what we came to.
Yeah, okay, just, I just couldn't hear that part of it.
And then we have some outstanding grants to um, a couple foundations for Eagles Basin, so we still might be able to add some additional new equipment, but.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. I'm moved to approve. All right, we got first from Brian, second from Jeff. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same time? All right, passed. And then up is uh, I believe donations. Uh, so resolution to accept donations. We have a two hundred and fifty dollars for the library from Karen and Steve Scott. Uh, for the Wabash Athletic Complex. We got twenty thousand dollars from James Considine, a thousand from Dan and Jenny Arnold and a thousand from Fastenal. Thank you very much. And then to the fire department for nine hundred and twenty seven dollars and seventy cents uh for my anonymous. So I thank everybody for those donations. I would entertain a motion to approve. Oh. First from Jean, second from Brian. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Ryan.
Aye.
All those opposed same time. All right, and then the open house again is gonna be on May fourteenth from five to seven at the ambulance barn, which is a Wednesday, I believe. Otherwise, any other comments, questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion, would you?
I'm moved.
We got first from Brian, second from Jean. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those.
Aye.
All those opposed same time. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.